Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the January 4th, 2022 work session of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. Hope everybody had a great New Year. And this will be our first meeting of the year, and thanks will go extremely well as they always do. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, planning commissioners. Happy New Year to you all. Today, we've got a couple of things we're going to do during the work session. Obviously, we'll do what we normally do. We'll go through the public hearing items you have that will be in your regular meeting at 1:30. And then, we're going to have a short training session we're going to do, and we have a new commissioner. Actually, two new commissioners will be coming on board, and we're going to start doing a little bit of refresher training and some assistance. As I think you all are aware, we support the planning commission going through the state certification program to get trained. But when you get put on the planning commission, you haven't had any training. You know, we feel like it's really appropriate for us to at least kind of bring you on and get you into the business of the planning commission's work. And so, we'll do that after we go through those first two cases today. So, we'll start off today with our item that the planning commission deferred at your last meeting, our Chesapeake Bay Exception 21-05, and Stacy Porter is going to present that.
Hi. All right. Well, good afternoon, planning commissioners. All right, let me put that first slide up. Oh, let me turn it on. Okay, great. Again, good afternoon, and I'm Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department, and I'll provide an overview of this application today. And for the benefit of our newer commissioners, I wanted to go through this slide again. I know some of you all have seen it before, but I'll just go ahead and go through the information again concerning the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area. Back in the late 1980s, City Council adopted a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area map, which indicates that certain properties are located in the Resource Protection Area, or RPA is what we say for short. I provided this exhibit on this slide to offer a simple explanation of the RPA. The RPA is located immediately adjacent to water bodies with tidal influence. It is composed of any tidal wetlands, and I'll go ahead and use my pointer here, your tidal wetlands here. Now, those wetlands can be vegetated or can be a mud flat. And then, the Resource Protection Area also includes the 100-foot buffer, which is split into your seaward 50-foot area, which is closest to your wetlands, and also, sorry, I think I'm losing my little pointer. And, well, I'll just go ahead and mention it's a landward 50-foot component as well, and that's the 50 feet furthest away from your wetlands. The applicant's proposal today involves the seaward 50-foot buffer. I'm so sorry. It looks like my little pointer stopped working there. It's involving that seaward 50-foot buffer area. There is a, the principal structure, it's going to be in addition to the principal structure in that seaward 50-foot area. Under the circumstances of denial by planning commission, an applicant may appeal their request to Circuit Court, but you all will be the final body of approval today. The applicant's property is approximately .31 acres in size. It contains a 1,600-square-foot Cape Cod-style, single-family home constructed in 1940. Also, the property has a 360-square-foot detached garage. The entire property is located in the Resource Protection Area. The property is bordered by the Flood Zone AE. However, the property improvements are not located in that floodplain area. The surrounding, the property is surrounded to the northeast and south by single-family residential development within the West Parkview neighborhood, and to the west by Scotts Creek. I'll now provide an overview of the applicant's proposal that was discussed at your December 7th public hearing. The applicant was issued a Chesapeake Bay ordinance violation September 8th, 2021 for work on, as you can see in the photo, a second-story wood deck without a permit. The wood deck frames an unpermitted 210-square-foot concrete patio that was constructed around 2015. The submitted proposal indicates the applicant is requesting an additional 60 square feet of impervious surface to complete their project. In the slide here, it's the thatched area, and they have a little yellow call-out mentioning that extra 60 square feet. So, the entire project is approximately 270 square feet of land disturbance that's located in that seaward 50-foot buffer. The Chesapeake Bay ordinance requires the submittal of a water quality impact assessment for land disturbance requests within, in that Resource Protection Area. The applicant's submitted WQIA indicated that one planting unit was proposed to compensate for the 270 square feet of land disturbance. The applicant's one planting unit would be composed of one canopy tree, two understory trees, and three shrubs. The selected species of tree, of canopy tree is river birch. The understory tree is American holly, and the selected shrub is a wax myrtle. The applicant spoke to you all at your December 7th, 2021, public hearing and verbally mentioned screening in the porch. In addition, she requested the deferral of the application to provide several written options to resolve her Chesapeake Bay violation, of which I will review on the next slide. And these were included, of course, in your staff report. Option number one, her first option was to maintain only the patio, which was that existing patio, and remove that partially constructed second-story wood porch and pay any necessary fines. And staff does want to provide the note that we do not pursue fines except in cases where someone refuses to comply with our Chesapeake Bay ordinance, which is not the case today. Her second option was to maintain the port, maintain the patio, fully complete the second-story wood porch, and possibly screen in the finished porch. In addition, the proposal mentions adding a staircase from the second story down to the ground floor. And option three is kind of similar, but basically, she is willing to reduce the size of the project. The, I did want to also note, the addition of the staircase to the ground level would be additional land disturbance, so she would have to revise her submitted water quality impact assessment, which she hasn't presented to us. But please note, the aforementioned options cannot be approved administratively and must receive approval by planning commission. In conclusion, staff will continue to maintain a stance to not provide a recommendation of approval for violation matters and would allow planning commission to make an appropriate determination. However, should the commission choose to approve the request, the approved development option should minimize land disturbance within that Resource Protection Area buffer. And that concludes the presentation.
Ms. Porter, let me just be clear here. If the planning commission refuses it, she always has the right to go to appeal to the Circuit Court.
She does.
So, she has, that's an option, too?
That is an option.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioners, any additional questions to Ms. Porter? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, our second item today is used permit 21-18, and Stacy Porter is also our staff coordinator on that application. She will give you a briefing on that one.
All right, again, good afternoon. Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. I'll provide an overview of the applicant's request, and this is application UP 21-18 in Midtown. Rachel Copeland and Sean Cooper request a use permit for an entertainment establishment at 3112 High Street, and the property is owned General Mixed Use GMU. The property is a commercially leased space within the Rodman Shopping Center, which is in the Midtown Mount Herman area of the city at the northwest corner of High Street and London Boulevard. The parcel is owned General Mixed Use as 2.3 acres in size and was developed in 1955. The site contains approximately 224 vehicle parking spaces. I'll now provide an overview of the surrounding area. To the north are single-family residential homes, Zone Multifamily Urban Residential, URM, and the Mount Herman Preschool Zone Urban Residential, UR. To the east is an insurance office, cellular phone store, and shoe repair business, Zone General Mixed Use GMU. To the south is the DeVita Greater Portsmouth Dialysis Center, Zone General Mixed Use GMU. And to the west is a beauty supply store and Family Dollar Store, Zone General Mixed This is the floor plan that was provided by the applicant. The proposed establishment will be known as Cooper's Restaurant and Lounge. The business was formerly located in Chesapeake. According to the submitted proposal, this 400, a 400, 4,560-square-foot establishment will provide up to 140 indoor seats and will be served by staff of up to 45 persons on various shifts. It will operate as a family restaurant, offering buffet service Tuesday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Upon the issuance of the use permit, the applicant proposes to offer various forms of entertainment from 8:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Entertainment will include comedians, karaoke, dancing, and live music, such as bands and small choir groups. The facility will offer event space for private parties. Security will be offered regularly during the hours of 8:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. and for private gatherings. Staff finds that the proposal complies with the goals and recommendations of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and as the proposed use complies with the property's commercial, district character area, and mixed district redevelopment-focused area designations. In addition, the proposal may potentially provide new job opportunities, which meets the Comprehensive Plan's goal to strengthen the local economy. Staff recommends the approval of the applicant's proposed entertainment establishment. Should the commission choose to recommend the approval of the request, staff has provided a list of recommended conditions for your consideration. And that concludes the presentation.
Commissioners, are there any questions to Ms. Porter?
Yes, absolutely. What was in the location previously?
It was a restaurant there. Then, it closed, and I'm not sure how long it's been closed, but it was a restaurant.
And the pictures that they submitted, is that from the actual address, 3112 High Street?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Did anybody from the Civic League provide any comment, good or bad?
Well, they asked questions, because I think mainly, they wanted to understand the type of entertainment being provided, and I did provide them the full packet of information, as well, it was, it was an updated narrative the applicant gave me. I didn't hear anything back from the Civic League after that.
Okay.
Any additional questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentations on today's public hearing items, and we will now move to the second item on the work sessions of today, and Julie Chop is going to give a presentation, the Planning Commissioners Guide, as sort of a planning 101, or planning and zoning 101, or planning commissioners 101, however you would like to describe it.
That's true.
We appreciate it no matter what you call it.
Okay. Happy New Year, planning commissioners. This is Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This presentation will provide an overview of the powers and duties of the planning commission for the City of Portsmouth with the focus on the primary duties. Under the Virginia Constitution, all city and county powers are delegations of authority granted by the General Assembly that are vested in the local governing body, City Council. The General Assembly has granted localities powers to implement comprehensive planning and to regulate the use and development of land by adopting zoning and subdivision ordinances. A city's powers are limited by the rule of statutory construction known as the Dillon Rule. The Dillon Rule limits the city's powers to those that are expressly granted by the General Assembly, those that may be necessarily or fairly implied from those powers expressly granted, and those that are essential and indispensable. Alternatively, some states exercise under a home rule statutory construction. Under home rule, a county or municipality can regulate anything that is not specifically denied by the state constitution, the General Assembly, or the charter itself. The Portsmouth Planning Commission is an administrative entity established by City Council pursuant to the Code of Virginia as well as the city code. The Code of Virginia mandates the creation of a planning commission by each locality in order to promote the orderly development of the locality and its environment. The planning commission's primary purpose is in an advisory capacity to hear and make recommendations to City Council on matters related to comprehensive planning, current planning, and land use development. The secondary purpose of the planning commission is in legislative authority. Planning commission's legislative authority extends only where expressly granted in the Code of Virginia. The planning commission, planning commission has specific advisory powers related to individual development applications. On legislative matters such as the comprehensive plan, subdivision text, zoning text, and zoning map amendments, as well as use permits, the commission is advisory to the City Council and makes recommendations to City Council. The planning commission also has the power to initiate amendments to the comprehensive plan, subdivision text, zoning text, and zoning map. In terms of secondary legislative authority, the Portsmouth Planning Commission is designated as the decision-making body for major preliminary subdivision plots and appeals, as well as for the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exceptions and Appeals as outlined in the Chesapeake Bay Protection Area and Subdivision Ordinance. Zoning is the power to regulate the use and design of land. Zoning in Portsmouth is regulated by the city's zoning ordinance, which consists of text and a zoning map. The provisions of the zoning ordinance apply to all property within the city except for development by the federal or state government or development within the public right-of-way. The zoning ordinance contains regulations for appropriate land use, including how far buildings must be from property lines, how many parking spaces are needed for a particular use, and how high a building may be built, et cetera. All land within the city is within a zoning district. The zoning ordinance contains a use table, which sets out the allowable uses for each zoning district. The use table lists land uses and indicates whether they are permitted by right within a given district, require a use permit, or are prohibited within a given zoning district. Uses that are permitted by right are subject to other requirements, but the use itself is permitted by right. One of the standard zoning tools is a use permit. A use permit applies to certain types of uses that are recognized in the zoning ordinance as potentially more impactful. The zoning ordinance requires that a developer get approval of a use permit from City Council before developing the use. A planning commission public hearing is held where planning commission provides a recommendation to City Council. The following month, City Council holds a public hearing on the application and makes a final determination. City Council's granting of a use permit may be subject to suitable regulations and safeguards or conditions regarding the location, character, and other features of the use permit as deemed necessary in City Council's legislative discretion to ensure compliance with the general intent and purposes of the ordinance and to prevent or minimize adverse effects from the use. The conditions do not have to be agreed upon by the applicant, but must bear a reasonable relationship to the legitimate land use concerns generated by the use. Staff compiles a staff report for the use permit request outlining and analyzing pertinent information regarding the proposed use. Staff prepares a list of proposed conditions for consideration by planning commission and City Council. Planning commission and City Council both have the ability to add or modify conditions if they feel it is appropriate. Another standard zoning tool used in Portsmouth is a rezoning, also known as a zoning map amendment. A rezoning amends the zoning map and changes the zoning district in which the land is situated. For zoning requests, Planning Commission provides a recommendation to City Council at a public hearing, and then, the application is heard at City Council for a final decision. While use permits are accomplished with a resolution, rezonings are adopted as ordinances by City Council. There are two types of rezonings, a standard rezoning and a conditional zoning. A standard rezoning is the change from one zoning district to another without any conditions. This slide shows an example of a staff report that was drafted for a standard rezoning and a City Council-approved ordinance. The second type of rezoning is a conditional zoning or a zoning map amendment with proffers. As part of a rezoning application, an applicant may voluntary proffer reasonable conditions to the subject property in a written statement. No applicant is required to make any proffer. Any proffers must be made prior to the start of any public hearing before City Council on the application. Once the public hearing has begun, City Council may accept amended proffers if they do not materially affect the overall proposal. All conditions included as proffers must comply with all applicable limitations within the Code of Virginia, including the rezoning must give rise to the need for the condition, they must have reasonable relation to the rezoning, must not mandate dedication of property for public facility, they must not require the creation of a property owner's association, must not include payment of or construction of off-site improvements, except when provided for in the Code of Virginia, the condition must be related to the physical development or operation of the property, and must be in accordance with the city's comprehensive This slide provides an example of a conditional zoning or a zoning map amendment with proffers. A sample staff report is shown and an example of a proffer letter that must be submitted with an application in order to include proffers. Many types of land use proposals that come before City Council and Planning Commission require that notice of the proposal is published and that individual notice of the proposal will be provided to interested persons or entities. The purpose of providing notice of a land use proposal is to give those property owners most directly affected an opportunity to be heard. In most cases, the notice is a precursor to one or more public hearings by City Council or Planning Commission. Use permits and rezonings require published notice once a week for two consecutive weeks in a published newspaper. They also require written notice be mailed at least five days prior to the public hearing to the owners of the parcel involved and the owners of all abutting properties. Abutting meaning properties that share a property line with the subject property and property immediately across the street from the property affected. Notification of a proposed application is also required 30 days prior to the public hearing to all military installations for a subject property that is within 3,000 feet of a military installation. The Portsmouth Planning Department sends notification for all applications to the military regardless of their distance from the military installation. A legal ad notice is published in the Virginian Pilot or Bridges twice. Mailed letters are sent only to the affected and abutted properties in accordance with state code. In addition, an affidavit is signed by the staff coordinator stating the property owner notifications have been mailed. The Portsmouth Planning Department, in coordination with the Engineering Department, also placed a sign on the subject property indicating the date and location of the public hearing and the type of application. An example of the notification sign is shown on this slide. This notice is not required by the state or the city. The application proposal and public hearing information are also posted on the Planning Department webpage. An example legal ad is shown on this slide depicting the legal notice that is included in the public hearing notifications. The planning commission's legislative authority comes into play when a major subdivision is submitted. Staff is working on updating the city's subdivision ordinance, and future trainings will be scheduled to go over planning commission's role within the subdivision process. Planning Commission also has legislative authority in determining Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exceptions to allow land development within the CBPA RPA. This is a very important function of the planning commission, and it is important to carefully review requests to ensure they are in accordance with the prescribed criteria. Planning Commission also has legislative authority to decide on appeals to the administrative decisions of the CBPA ordinance if the appeal meets the standards outlined within the ordinance. The state has been updating its CBPA standards, so once state guidance is provided, the city's CBPA ordinance will be updated. Staff is planning a subsequent presentation to delve deeper into the planning commission's role in determining CBPA Exceptions and Appeals. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to stand by for any questions. Please feel free to email me at chopj@portsmouthva.gov with any additional comments or questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chop. Commissioners, are there any additions or questions to Ms. Chop?
I have one. When it comes to the submittal of a package from a applicant, what is the minimum that they are required to provide the commission?
For what type of applications?
Let's say the one that we've previewed today.
Like a use permit application?
The drawings and things of that such, are those required?
Yes, we, so on the, the application for each of the planning applications, we have, we outline what is required. So, for a use permit, we require a narrative of what they're proposing to do, the proposed use. We also require elevations of the proposed building or pictures of the establishment, and then, a conceptual site plan.
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
Any additional questions to Ms. Chop?
Could I add one thing to that?
Sure.
We also have provision in our ordinance when it comes to doing a traffic impact analysis. While they're not required all the time, if you trigger certain traffic volumes, they are required as well.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Chop.
And that's all we have for the work session, and be glad to answer any questions, or if the planning commission has anything you'd like us to do to assist. And I'll just make one other comment that while we appreciate the opportunity to brief planning commission and do these training sessions, as today, we're always available anytime, any day of the week. If you have any questions, feel free to call, email, however you like to get in touch with us.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Commissioners, are there any additional items we need to discuss during this work session? There being none, this work session is now concluded. We will start our regular meeting at 1:30.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, being held in the City Council chambers. Before we begin, let me introduce our newest commissioner, Commissioner Carey. Welcome. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the planning commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Commissioner Curry?
Present.
Commissioner Page?
Present.
Commissioner Barnes?
Present.
Six members of the planning commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minister of the December 7th
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Commissioner Curry?
Present.
Commissioner Page?
Present.
Commissioner Barnes.
Present.
Six members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minister of the December 7th, 2021 public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Page. I make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the December the 7th, 2021 public hearing. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, February the 1st, 2022, at 12:30 PM, City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to city council for action at their February the 8th, 2022 public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Thank you. Our first public hearing item, CBE-21-05 West Parkview. Carol T. Downing requests a Chesapeake Bay exception to maintain an unpermitted concrete patio and to complete an unpermitted second-story wood deck within the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area's 50-foot seawood buffer at 1725A Street. The property is owned urban residential U.R. and is further described as Tax Map 60, Parcel 28. The Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plans Generalized Future Land Use Map recommends high-density, single-family development for the property. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your case at this time?
Hello, my name's Carol Thomas Downing, and my husband and I live in West Parkview. We love this town. I'm going to thank all the commissioners for taking the extra time to be here. Appreciate this second meeting on our behalf. I've submitted everything in writing, so I don't want to, you know, go over everything that you already have, just simply to say that when I submitted my second list at the last hearing, it may have confused issues, but I was trying to kind of break it down into, okay, you know, what can we do? And to resolve this. We have learned a very hard lesson in terms of hiring contractors. I wish there was some kind of a review process for contractors so that homeowners like my husband and myself don't get caught in, you know, the web of this, which we have now on two counts. But it's been a hard lesson, and as I said in my first submission, this is, my retirement funding has gone into this project. This was our hopeful goal towards retirement, was to complete this greened-in porch and be able to live in our house on A Street, which is right on Scotts Creek, for as long as possible. I've talked to a lot of my neighbors about the project, and I saw the list that was sent to them, the letter that they received to express their support or whatever about the project. To the person, they have all been very excited about our project. They think that it's going to increase the value of the entire neighborhood, and that's, that was part of our joy, really, in, in doing this. We in no way want to harm the health of the creek, the Chesapeake Bay, or any of the lands around. We keep a natural buffer. I consult with the Elizabeth River Project about what to do with our creek edge and everything. So now that it's come down to unpermitted deck sitting on unpermitted porch, I can understand, you know, the, the problems there. So I would just like to say that if it is possible to keep that patio, I call it the porch, but let's call it the patio, I do think, and in speaking to environmentalists and surveyors and whatnot, that it would be, it would create a lot more disturbance of the land to do any sort of demolition of that patio. So in moving forward, I think that's just number one, is may I keep the patio as is. And then the other thing that may have been confusing about my last presentation was talking about the steps coming down from the second floor. That was going to be a project years down the road when I had recovered financially from this first stage, because all this is coming out of my retirement funds. And at this point, we have, our house was originally zoned duplex, and there was an apartment on the second floor, so there is now a door on our second floor leading to nowhere, which of course we keep locked. So at some point, we would like a stairs built down to the ground level from that back door. We're not intending to turn it back into a duplex, but this was just for, you know, ease of getting up to that second floor. But again, that was something we were going to push off, so we don't even have to address that issue right now, because I understand that would involve more expense of my going back to a, an architect and having new drawings drawn up. So I'm trying to keep the expenses down as much as possible. So thank you so much for your time and your consideration. I appreciate you all being here. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Downing? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-21-05. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone here who would like to speak on this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, if there is no further discussion, we are in need of a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion to deny CBE-21-05.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to deny CBE-21-05. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is denied by a vote of six to zero. Our next item, UP-21-18 Midtown. Rachel Copeland and Sean Cooper request a use permit for an entertainment establishment at 3112 High Street. The property is zoned general mixed-use, GMU, and is further identified as Tax Map 352, Parcel 36. The Generalized Future Land Use Map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends commercial development for the parcel. And I see the applicant or representative is already here to present your application.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
How y'all doing today? My partner, Rachel, couldn't be here today. She was a little under the weather, but this is my landlord. She came here with me today.
Excuse me, sir. If you could just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sean Cooper. Address is 3112 High Street.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Cardi Keen Hamilton. I'm the managing partner for KFNF LLC. KFNF has owned this particular shopping center, my dad, over 35, almost 40 years. Just to state the position of KFNF, you know, we are excited to bring a new restaurant back and, and to have it open soon, and, you know, we are in favor of the entertainment side of the restaurant. So the facility has been in operation, like I said, for over 40 years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to share my vision of what we want to do with the restaurant. I've had a restaurant since about 10 years now, and mostly what we want to do is, we want to do 35 and older. And I'm in a jazz band, so we want to do jazz, mostly Fridays and Saturdays. And I'm in a gospel choir, too. We want to do a little gospel choir, and from hours of 11 to 8, we're doing a full family restaurant, and that's mostly, that's mostly it. And we've, I had a Cooper's Restaurant in Chesapeake for five years. Never had a problem or anything. Just ran a family-owned business, a restaurant, never had problems. And when the pandemic hit, we had to move the restaurant because it was hard on us, at that time it was very hard. So we moved the restaurant to Portsmouth, and we just want to bring the same atmosphere, the family atmosphere, for mature audience over 35 to come and enjoy yourself, because a lot of places in, around here, it's more of a younger crowd. So people of my age and older don't get to enjoy themselves because they got to worry about the younger crowd. So we want to bring a older crowd, have to dress up, to come in, listen to jazz, music, go home, be with your family, as well as mine, and come back the next day. And that's mainly what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Cooper?
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Cooper, from, from the photos that were submitted that we have in our packet?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any pool hall, pool tables, or any plan to bring in any gaming?
No, ma'am. Got to keep the young kids out. No, ma'am. Got to be 35 and older.
Okay. So much more like a, I guess, like a, not like a bar, but, I mean, somebody going to be checking IDs?
Yes, ma'am. Make sure, you know, checking IDs, dress code, you can't wear tennis shoes, ball caps, things like that. We want to try to keep it more of a up-class place, and should be good, you know, jazz, R&B, and, yes, ma'am, just on our Fridays and Saturdays.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any additional questions for Mr. Cooper?
I have one. You say you're part of the gospel choir, so are you not going to do anything on Sundays?
Well, my dad's a preacher, so we do the gospel on Sundays, and that's for me, 5 to 8.
So would that be the same requirement as 35 and older?
No, no. No, not with the gospel, we don't. We let everybody know the gospel. Everybody needs the gospel.
And my last question is, what made you decide age 35 and, and older for a Friday, Saturday?
Honestly, to keep younger kids out, because, like I said, when you're going as my age and older, you just don't want to mingle with the younger kids, because I like to go have a nice time, listen to music, and go back home to my family. I don't want any trouble or other things, so we wanted to keep it 35 and older.
Any additional questions? Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Will you need an alcohol license for your business as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Mr. Cooper?
Yes, I have one more, and this may be for your, for the owner, but what about the, the soundproofing? Because I did see that it is adjacent to, you know, residential in there, and I'm just wondering, you know, how soundproof or what sort of decibels are you going to be playing at night?
We were going to soundproof the front of the building. Behind us, there's actually really nothing behind us but a school, elementary school, but the front of the building, we were going to do that. So that's our next step.
That location has been restaurants through the years, and from what I understand, I wasn't involved, because my dad died in 2013, and he's a very familiar face here, as well as the other partners. But, so we understand that there was some music, you know, you always have karaoke and all of that in the area, so, so adjacent on the Glasgow side, somebody is allowing, operating loud music three or four, five o'clock in the mornings, so which has been very disturbing, but this is going to be a limited operation time from, you know, like you said, just Friday and Saturday with family business. We've, we've had to do a lot of investment of reopening the facility, a lot of money and, you know, bringing things up to code, and so we are excited to help our city and bring, you know, new, you know, new ideas, and also help the city to, in there, you know, and our investment.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-21-18. I have no registered speakers. However, if there's someone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If not, the chair is in need of a motion for UP-21-18 with conditions.
Mr. Chairman, it's Chairman, Commissioner Page, I make a motion for the approval of UP-21-18 with conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second to approve UP-21-18. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further business we need to discuss today? Mr. Baldwin, is there any further, further business?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have no additional items for today.
Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.